Thank you all so much. We're going to move right over into our regular board meeting. We've already did the invocation and pledge. So, right now, it's time for roll call. Ms. Feibel, please, please mark Mr. Ummling as present. I'm not sure if Mr. Little is still here or not. But I know they had to. Mine haven't either. Mine's is up now. We have to do a voice vote, so all in favor for the roll call, please say aye. Aye. Anybody not here, now I'm teasing, they wouldn't be saying anything, but. Yeah. So, 1.02, consideration of the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 meeting. I need a motion in a second.
Move to approve the minutes of the October 21st, 2025 Caddo Pear School Board meeting as presented.
Ms. Tremel?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did somebody say something?
No.
Okay. Please submit your vote electronically. Please show the vote when everyone has voted. Ms. Feibel? Okay. We're now down to the visitor's section. I only have. Do I have any more cards, Ms.? Mr. Gibbs, were these all the cards? One card? Two? Okay. Ms. John Glover? Okay, before I. We're now down to the visitor's section. The Caddo Pear School Board welcomes your input and comments during the visitor's section. When your name is called, step to the microphone and make your remarks to the entire board. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. A time clock on the monitor screens will help you be aware of your time. When the time runs out, your time is up. It is board policy not to respond individually to members of the audience. When appropriate, the board may refer concerns to staff to be addressed. As this is a public meeting, we ask that you refrain from referring to personnel by name or incident. Thank you. Ms. Glover?
Good evening again, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana 71118. I just witnessed that you all approved your minutes of the October 21st, 2025 meeting. Where is, where are the meetings for the public? Because it's not on your, it's not on the link that we see minutes for. The last minutes that's on this was recorded September the 2nd, 2025. So, if you all have what I, a citizen, doesn't have, how is that? That makes no sense to me. Number two. Minutes are not detailed anymore. They're like a fill-in-the-blanks kind of situation. It says, just for instance, this one that talks about an agenda item. And it, and the answer is move to approve their proposed Presidio Network Solutions. It gives no detailed information as to what was discussed and how you reach where you are with that approval. See, before I can appreciate what you all appreciate, I need to be able to read it. So, me not having access to minutes disadvantages to me, doesn't it? Now, you all, apparently, you all got the minutes, but the public doesn't. We just get to hear you approve, but we don't know what you approved. And this, going back to visit the video, is not acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Glover, also, I believe one or two, you've, you've turned in numerous of cards. I think one or two are on consent. Mr. Abrams, I'm not sure how we handle that. I don't, I want, I don't want to be out of order.
She can speak now.
Okay.
On each one of them, it's on consent.
The ones, because, because you've, you've handed in several cards with agenda items. And they are on, I know one or two of them are on consent. And I want to make sure. Because I don't want it out there that we have mistreated anybody. Okay, 6.02, Ms. Feibel, is that on consent?
No.
That's not on consent. 6.11. That's on, 6.11 is, hold on a second, 6.11 is on consent? 6.07, she has one for here for that. That's on consent. And then, you just spoke as a visitor, so that's your, that's your, that's your, that was that three minutes.
That's not on consent.
Okay, so you're, you want your 6.11 to be 6.10? Yeah, I will. Yeah. Okay, you turned in one regular to speak, so that was your first three minutes that you just spoke. Okay, as a visitor. So, you had 6.02. You had 6.10, because that was 611, right? You put 60, so now it's 611. I've changed, 16, I'm sorry. I've changed it for you. And then, you have 6.07. That's on consent. Hold on one second. Mr. Abrams. And then, for consent items, as soon as. Mr. Abrams, so does she, she, for three minutes, because she's got, how many on consent? One? How many minutes, how many minutes are we allowed to, is it, how does this consent? Three minutes. So, three minutes for the one on consent, right now.
And that's 6.07.
That's on consent.
Okay, that's the one I had on my card.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying this for me, too. I need to ask a question with regards to the Caddo Virtual Academy, and not just the academy, but the project itself, the Career Center. What is our total student population that will be targeted for the Career Center? How many children are there? How many high school students are there that will be able to utilize this program at the new Career Center? A $40 to $70 million project. And our student population is declining every day, it seems. And yet, we believe that this is a great investment. Is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Ms. Miller, Ms. Jacqueline Miller.
Jacqueline Miller, 6207, Nottaway Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana 71119. To the board and Mr. Burton. I'm here to speak on the public hearing. And I, and I apologize for getting up earlier. I'm still trying to figure everything out. And it's some information on social media, and I, I don't know if I completely understand everything. But I do know that parents should be afforded this face-to-face assembly to ask questions, to get information that's disseminated. And I think that any institution of learning, consideration should be given to parents to afford them that opportunity to know what's going on about their child's educational future. And you know what? I just witnessed a board member right here getting clarification and assurance about their personal child, face-to-face. So, there's disparity. And I think that we need to look at our people that are being marginalized, our, our parents that are being disrespected because things are not afforded to them that should be. And you know, I don't want to go religion, but I am. In Matthew 25, it says, Jesus says, "When you've done it to the least of these, you've done it unto me." So, you all sitting here, that's going to pass one day. But eternal values will go on forever. So, think about how you treat our, our parents. And I want to say this, there's a saying that says, "Many things are lawful, but they're not expedient." It is permissible for you to have policies that work for your favor, but they're not expedient for our parents. Our parents that have a level of apprehension and mistrust and lack of transparency. So, I think we should consider that for future reference and future consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Okay, thank you.
I can't read this name, and I know. Okay. Come to the podium, sir. I'm not trying to be ugly or anything, sir. Somebody can assist you with this next time if you really do need some help with this. We'll have staff assist you. I can't read a thing on here.
You're not the only one. It's all right, ma'am.
We'll have staff really assist you with this. I don't want you looked over, and I know some presidents that have sat here that would not let you speak if you, you know. So, so, you know, if you need some help, let our staff or somebody help you with this.
I appreciate that. I will do that next time. Thank you. And I wanted to clarify, people speaking on behalf of organizations get five minutes, not three, or is that just for the executive meeting?
Okay. If you're a school-based organization, so if you're like, we have, what's Jackie's, Red River United, Caddo Federation of Teachers. You have APAL. They get five minutes.
So, is it specifically student-specific or is it youth organizations?
No, 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 no. It's like kind of a union organization kind of sort of thing.
Specifically, okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Just want to get clarification on that.
Okay.
All righty, as I stated before, Bobby Woodruff, I live at 1525 Suburbia Drive, 71105. And I'm here today on behalf of DSA, All Streets, All People, the People's Promise Youth Division, and, oh, there's another one I'm forgetting. There's a lot that's actually asked me to come here today. And I think the reason for that is because I've been very active within the community over these past five years, especially post-COVID. And I've seen a trend, not only within the city, but especially within this school board, of people not understanding the position that they're in as public servants. So, let me, I would like to clarify this as well. Many of folks, especially on this board right now that I've seen, have directly disrespected members of the public, telling people to be quiet while also chit-chatting, trying to advocate for themselves in other different ways, while also not actively listening to the parents and retirees that have come here to speak to y'all. So, let me put this, let me put this to you guys in plain language. If you think that you are stressed, if you think that you are tired, if you think that you're working hard, but you don't think that you're working harder than a single mother who has to provide for her two children and has to keep her children in these schools to deal with that, you're not working hard enough. So, let me put it more plainly. This school board has had a clear anti-democratic and anti-student, anti-teacher, and anti-parent streak within it for the multiple closures of public schools, the continued advocacy of private schools and charterization, and the continual lack of real public democratic participation, removing things like public comment requirements and trying to do things at later hours where working people cannot go. I'm here, despite this room being empty now in comparison to when we started, because I have the time and the privilege to stand here and sit here while most people don't. The people who need to be in front of y'all can't. And the problem is, is that's not their job. It's your job to make sure that they can get out and they can hear you. If you feel like the public is confused on some of your policies, that's your fault, not theirs. And that's been an irritating part of this meeting. I've seen multiple people basically just put out puff pieces for specific policies that they want while also actively saying, mm, I don't think the public understands these things. That's your fault. You need to be doing better. You need to be going out there. We have teachers who are worried about their retirement. We have students who do not have access to proper mental health facilities. We have all of these other problems, and yet, we're sitting here constantly arguing over the smaller things while also not talking about how we can actively push for things to better students' and teachers' lives. It's been a lot of talking without a lot of doing. And to be fair, I understand how, how local governmental bodies work. I'm a political scientist. I'm very aware of you guys' structures, limitations, and other things like that. The thing that frustrates me is with all of this knowledge and information from the community as well, it's been a pathetic showing from the work that you guys have been putting in. I'm so sorry. It's been, it's been not enough, and more and more folks, especially on the livestream watching me talk right now, know exactly what I'm talking about. And I'm going to say this plainly, y'all need to be doing more to engage the public on what's going on, or else you need to be keeping an eye on your seat next year. And I'm going to be very clear about that. Y'all are going to hear more from me, y'all are going to hear more from the organizations that I'm with, and you're going to be hearing more from parents come hell or high water. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. That's all for public comments. We are now down to 3.01, establish the agenda and propose consent agenda. Mister, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Burton.
Thank you, President Green. Board members, we do have one additional agenda item to add to tonight's agenda that's been requested. And so, at this time, I'd like President Green or Ms. Yates to discuss their agenda item request.
Ms. Yates brought this to me, and I thought this was so, I know this has been on a lot of people's hearts. The officer that was killed in Vivian, Louisiana this past week. Just about every place that I've been to, this has been discussed. So, Ms. Yates thought it was a great idea, and I'm going to let her speak to it, to make sure that the school board sends a resolution to the family on behalf of the Caddo Pear School Board. I, I didn't feel that anybody would be opposed to that. So, I asked that it be added to the agenda along with Ms. Yates, since we are executive board members.
Yes. President Green and I would like to add an agenda item this evening. Although it was not included in the original agenda, we felt it was important and necessary to bring this forward. The item is a resolution honoring the life of Officer and Coach Mark Brock, who tragically lost his life over the weekend. Officer Brock faithfully served our community as a law enforcement officer and also served the students of North Caddo as an assistant. and also served the students of North Caddo as an assistant football coach. His impact was felt deeply both on and off the field. At this time, I would like to call Ms. Woods to the podium to read the resolution into the official minutes before we open the floor for public comments and proceed with a vote for the board to add the item to the agenda.
Mr. Abrams.
Requested that you put a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Officer Mark Brock. Need to now ask if there are any comments for the public as to whether or not this should be added to the agenda.
I'll do, can I do that right now?
Yes.
Okay. If there's any comments or any opposition to this being added to the agenda, please get on.
For the public, for the public, I ask. Ask in the public. Does anyone have any comments from the public? Just ask the question.
No, she called at the last minute.
Just make sure that no one makes any, does not want to ask any comments about it.
The public, okay. Ms. McLean.
I was just going to be ready to give her a second if she was making a motion. That's all, because I love it. That's all.
Point of parliamentary inquiry. I believe this requires a vote of all 12. We're no longer in executive session, so we're in general meetings.
We're fixing to get into that.
First thing I've said was, you got to, you have a, you have someone getting ready to make a motion. Before we can add it to the agenda, we have to ask the public if anyone has any comments regarding whether this should or should not be added to the agenda. That's what we're asking right now before there is anything to be, there'll be, then a motion, then it will be a motion to add it to the agenda, which requires unanimous consent, okay? Because it's up to date.
So it's, it's public commentary, then a first, then a second, then a general vote?
It's not public commentary. It's only public asking whether anyone has any reasons for it not to be or to be added to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
At what point can Ms. Woods read it?
Once it gets on the agenda.
Okay. I've asked the public, so that we're clear. I've asked the public, and nobody has come to the podium.
Correct. Now there should be a motion to add it to the agenda.
Now there is a motion on the floor. Somebody needs to make a motion.
Motion to add resolution honoring the life and legacy of Officer Mark Brock.
Okay. Ms. McLean, you're already on.
Second.
Okay. It's got a, it's got a motion and a second. Now we're on for comments.
No comments.
Is there? I'm adding it, right now we're adding it to the agenda. And so if there's no comments, Ms. Woods, please come before us.
First you need to do, you got to have.
Hold on, whoa, 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 whoa. Way too many Indians. I mean, way too many chiefs, not enough Indians. Mr. Abrams, where are we at now?
Okay. Now you have to have a vote as to whether or not, you know, everybody agrees to have it on the agenda.
Okay. So now we will take a vote. If Officer, are we going to honor Officer Mark, the life and legacy through a resolution of Officer Mark Brock?
No. The motion is whether we're adding it to the agenda.
Okay. Whether we add this to the agenda.
Motion to add to.
Whether we add this resolution to the agenda.
Correct.
That's what's on the floor right now.
Right.
Please vote.
Yes.
All in favor? Any, any opposed? Okay. Please electronically vote. Okay. At this point. Okay. Ms. Feibel asked that. Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Okay. Now, do I need to ask Ms. Woods to read, Mr. Abrams? Are we open up for comments from board members or what?
If you want to read the resolution, that way you can have a motion then approve the resolution.
All right. You can come forward, Ms. Woods.
I believe you also have a copy of this at your stations. Resolution honoring the life and legacy of Officer Mark Brock. Whereas the Caddo Parish School Board and the entire Vivian community are united in heartbreak as we mourn the tragic loss of Officer Mark Brock, a man whose courage, compassion, and unwavering devotion to others defined his every day. And whereas Officer Brock served the Vivian Police Department with extraordinary honor and bravery, protecting our citizens with a steady hand and a servant's heart, never hesitating to step forward when others were in need. And whereas his service extended far beyond his badge. As the assistant football coach at North Caddo High School, as well as North Caddo Middle School, Coach Brock poured his heart into the young people of our parish, teaching them discipline, confidence, and resilience, but more importantly, showing them what it means to be a good man, a loyal friend, and a leader. And whereas he was more than a coach. He was a mentor, a protector, a listener, and a constant source of encouragement for every student who had the privilege to know him. His impact stretched far beyond the football field, shaping the lives of countless children who saw him as a hero long before the world recognized him as one. And whereas Officer and Coach Brock embodied kindness and strength in equal measure. He showed up for his community with humility and purpose, leaving behind a legacy of service that will continue to ripple through Vivian, North Caddo, and Caddo Parish for generations. And whereas the loss of such a remarkable man leaves our community grieving deeply. Yet even in our sorrow, we are comforted by the memory of his courage, his laughter, his dedication, and the countless moments he spent lifting up others. And now therefore be it resolved that the Caddo Parish School Board honors and celebrates the life of Officer Mark Brock, acknowledges with profound gratitude the immeasurable difference he made in the lives of our students, our families, and our community. And be it further resolved that the Caddo Parish School Board extends our heartfelt love, sympathy, and prayers to the Brock family, the Vivian Police Department, the North Caddo School Community, and all who are grieving the loss of this extraordinary man. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be placed in the permanent records of the Caddo Parish School Board as a lasting tribute to a life lived with purpose, sacrifice, and a heart full of service. May we never forget the legacy of Officer and Coach Mark Brock, and may we honor him by carrying his spirit of compassion and courage forward.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Okay.
Now you need a motion and a second.
A motion and a second? A motion and a second to approve it?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rochelle is on.
Move to approve the resolution as read and presented.
Mr. Bowman? It's been moved and second. Please vote. Hold on one second. I'm actually supposed to ask Mr. Rochelle if he has anything to say.
Let's vote.
Mr. Bowman? Okay. Okay. Ms. McLean.
I just wanted to say that this is really beautifully written. I was, who wrote this? Well, it's beautifully done. And I just want to commend you on, on the work that you put into this. I think it really paints a true picture of Officer Mark Brock. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Ms. McLean, in that there's no one else on the board. Please vote. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. All righty. When everyone has voted, please show the vote. Thank you, Ms. Feibel. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Burton.
What item, what item number that we just approved would that be?
It is to establish the agenda.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Members of the board, the agenda reads 4.01 Personnel Leaves, 4.02 Personnel Resignations, 5.01 Purchasing Bids, 6.01 To Consider and Take Action With Respect to Adopting a Resolution Authorizing the Incurrence of Debt and Issuance of General Obligation School Bond Series 2026 of the Parishwide School District of Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and Providing for Other Matters in Connection Therewith. 6.02 Consideration to Approve MOU Between Caddo Parish Public Schools and Brentwood Hospital of Shreveport. 6.03 Consideration to Approve Mental Health Inter-Agency Agreement. 6.04 Consideration to Approve the Easement Agreement with the Village of Mooringport. 6.05 Consideration to Approve the Extension of the Louisiana, State of Louisiana Agency Lease Number 22131 with Apex Natural Gas LLC for an additional two-year period. 6.06 Begin the Process of Naming the Existing Softball Field at CE Bird High School after Jerry Badgley and Receive Community Input. 6.07 Consideration to Approve Staff to Formally Initiate Price Negotiations for the Property Owned by Louisiana Tech University, which includes the current site where Caddo Virtual Academy is located, and Additional Frontage Property Owned by the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce or others. 6.08 Consideration for Approval to Accept the Purchase Offer for the Pine Valley Elementary Property. 6.09 Consideration to Approve Revision to CPSB Policy EFAB Employee Use of Social Media. 6.10 Consideration to Approve Proposed Changes to the Caddo Parish School Board Insurance Plans. 6.11 Consideration to Approve Revision to CPSB Policy IDDF Education of Students with Exceptionalities. And 9.01 Request for Settlement Authority. Claimant Bridget Lindsay, Riley Lindsay, Date of Loss 11/30/23, And that concludes our agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burton. Okay. Now we're down to Establish the Agenda and Propose Consent Agenda. Need a motion on the floor? Mr. Rochelle?
Move to establish the.
Hold on. What was that?
Oh, you haven't annotated which ones are on consent yet.
Okay. As of now, I have 4.01 is on consent. 4.02 is on consent. 5.01 not on consent. 6.01 on consent. 6.02 not on consent. 6.03 on consent. 6.04 on consent. 6.05 on consent. 6.06 on consent. 6.07 on consent. 6.08 on consent. 6.09 not on consent. 6.10 not on consent. 6.11 on consent. 9.01 is on consent. Okay. So I have a motion on the floor. I mean, I don't have a motion. I have a, Mr. Rochelle on the board to speak.
Move to establish the agenda and the proposed consent agenda for the November 18th, 2025 Caddo Parish School Board Meeting.
Mr. Mayo?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote.
Do we have to do the vocal thing again, too?
Oh, I apologize. All in favor? Okay. Well, yeah, we are. But let me say this, so we won't prolong the meeting anymore. Does the maker of the motion have a problem with him going ahead and adding 6.09? Wait, 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 wait. Wait, you want to add that on to the? Yeah. Well, never mind, because, well, first, the whole board would have to agree with that. Okay. Yeah. No, no problem. We can, all right. All righty. So we have a, we have a motion on the floor and a second, right? Please vote. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Nay. Okay. Please electronically vote. Yeah, y'all got me. Y'all got me today. You won't get me again, though. I haven't. Oh, did we? Okay. So now we have to confirm the consent agenda at this time. So I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Rochelle?
Move to confirm the consent agenda for the November 2025 Caddo Parish School Board Meeting.
Mr. Mayo?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor? Any opposed? Please submit your vote electronically. Mr. Bowman, you're on to speak? Okay. Okay. That brings us down to 6.02. Oh, 5.01, I apologize. 5.01 Purchasing Bid. Is there a motion on, can anybody bring a motion? Oh, Mr. Rochelle?
Move to approve the following bid as recommended by staff and submitted in the electronic mail-out on the scoring tabulation sheet bid number 07C-26 Calculators Awarded to Focus Camera LLC.
Is there a second, Dr. Dozart? It's been moved in second. Do you have anything to say? You, Dr. Dozart? Okay. Dr. Vincent?
Yeah. I'd like to offer a substitute motion to deny this bid and resubmit it. I did verify through counsel that we can pull this bid.
You have a substitute motion on the floor? Does he have a second? Okay. The lawyer is on. Mr. Abrams?
I wasn't clear. Now, I didn't say that you just could pull the bid. You have to have rationale and reasons for that.
Okay. I'm sorry. What was that interpretation again, Mr. Abrams? I'm sorry.
Right. You have to have rationale and reasons.
Please let the attorney speak. I know we're getting a little antsy, but let the attorney speak.
In order to just deny something, if it's within the budget and they meet all the other criteria, you have to have grounds for dismissing it.
I have a point of order.
There's a point of order on the floor?
There has not been a second. So he's asked for a substitute motion and?
Well, hold on, Mr. Rochelle. The attorney's trying to explain something. Really, there wasn't any time to even get in a second because the attorney came right in. I'm trying to listen to hear what the attorney's saying as to why he can't put the substitute motion on the floor. And I want the attorney to finish. Go over what you just said, Mr. Abrams.
He could put the motion on the floor. But what I'm saying is, he indicated, I'd say that he could, that he could pull it and not do it. But you can do it, but the fact is, you have to have rationale and reasons for not doing it. You can't use it in a. for not doing it. You can't use it in order to just to give it to somebody else down the road. That's where it amounts to.
Okay, so he just made his, you made a motion. Is there a second on Mr., is there a second on Dr. Vincent's motion? Wait, did you just second Ms.?
No, I had, I had, I had. I, I respected our attorney. I had said second.
Hold on. Hold on one second. Okay, so listen at this. So are you pulling your second, Dr. Dozart?
No.
So you know you seconded Mr. Rochelle's?
No, I heard him when he said.
Okay, let me ask you this, Mr. Abrams. Can Dr. Dozart second two, two different of?
Yes.
Can she do? I've never heard of that. Okay, so she seconded his motion, okay?
Barry made the motion and you seconded it.
I sure did. That was gone.
That's the same.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay.
Let's pull her second.
And then he pulled the mic up.
Okay, so listen at this. So she, so, so, so Attorney Abrams said it's legal for her to second them both.
She seconded, she seconded Mr. Dr. Vincent's motion.
No, she seconded, she seconded.
There hadn't been one on, okay, well, no.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I've never seen that done. So listen, so you're pulling your second. You're pulling your second for Mr. Rochelle?
No.
Do you wanna second Terrence or Barry?
I, now you all, who was first?
That's who you seconded. So you wanna pull, you wanna pull your second from?
Now the question is, is there a second?
Okay, so she's keeping her second. So do you, is anybody seconding Dr. Vincent?
I will second it. Oh, yeah, that's right. My mic was pulled from me.
Okay, okay, so listen, Dr. Dozart. Hey, so listen, hold on, wait, 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 wait. So what we'll do, so what we'll do is we'll pull Dr. Dozart's second from, from Mr. Rochelle. And Ms. Yates, you'll second Mr. Rochelle. And Dr. Vincent is seconded by Dr. Dozart. Okay.
Parliamentary, I just wanna know, okay? It, it, there's been a motion on the floor. It was properly seconded. Now we've had a substitute motion, and now we're gonna go back to the one that's before. We can't go back to the one before because there's another motion on the floor. So she can't pull her second anyway. I don't agree that she can't second both of them. But that's, I still don't believe that. We can't go back to my motion and her pull because he's already got another motion on the floor.
Okay, so, 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 okay, okay. So let me, so let me ask you this. So it's legal for her to second both of these motions? Okay, okay, that's all I needed to know. Okay, so, no, 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 no.
I try not to say too much, but it's just what the attorney said, that's what I had done.
Okay, so.
I did a second twice.
Yeah, okay. So now we have, we're on Dr. Do, so now we're on Dr. Vincent's. He's got the substitute motion. So now we're on Dr. Vincent's substitute motion. Okay, then. So we're on Dr. Vincent's substitute motion.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this was good. I'll just simply say this. It's good exercise for us to, let's let the, let's let the pressure out of the room.
Okay, wait a second, 'cause we have to have the substitute motion on file. So let me, could you please repeat your substitute motion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam President. We wanna reject all bids and resubmit bids out for bids. You know, we wanna reject all current bids and resubmit the bids for the market.
What, do we have to put the reasoning into minutes?
Mr. Abrams?
I have concern about that motion. And doing that motion unless we have rationale and reason as to why you would do that and not accept a bid that's within the budget. You can't use it in order to just let it go to somebody else if you rebid it immediately.
Is that for me to respond, Mr. Abrams? I guess my reason is you all were doing work to ensure that, that the bids that we receive, that we do more local work or give folks the, an opportunity to get these products and services from a local standpoint. The last two bids that we've done, I can't remember the, oh, it was backpacks, school supplies. It went to New York City. I have no problem with the people in New York, but the money is generated right here in Caddo. Is your sales dollars directly going somewhere else, wherever it's going, New Meck, wherever, outside of our borders? I know this isn't a big amount, but I think this is a way we can begin to start the practice of giving more local vendors an opportunity to get access to, to the services that we offer. And so again, this particular bid is as well going to New York City. And I just have a problem with your tax dollars, the public tax dollars going directly somewhere else before they even recycle in our system. And so I would ask the board to begin this work. It makes no sense for us to have an ad hoc committee to study this stuff when we can begin to put some reins on it now. For an example, the next company was in Menden. I prefer that company in Menden to get the, well, I can't dictate that, but you all get my point. Again, I don't wanna see our tax dollars, our sales dollars going directly out of this parish immediately. And so that's my point, that's my stance on it, and I ask for your support.
Okay, Dr. Dozart, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Madam President. No.
Okay. Mr. Amblin?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I'm kinda for what Dr. Vincent has just said. However, this amount of money really doesn't require to be bidded out. So therefore, I would ask that we reject all bids and they purchase these from whoever they wish to purchase these calculators from.
Mr. Rochelle, you're on.
Okay, I guess number one, this would be for Mr. Abrams. One, what happens with the bid at that point, if it's, if it's voided or canceled or?
It can be challenged in court.
Okay, it can be challenged, okay, all right. So, but let's just say they just leave it alone. It was mentioned in the Executive Committee meeting that we had to wait a year before we?
And that is not correct. The year only applies to actually public works. I did clarify that with Dr. Vincent before some while. That only applies to public works. But you still have to have grounds and reasons. And I don't believe that the grounds and reasons that we're, you know, that you wanted to just go to Menden or to any other place locally is the grounds and reasons you can use if it wasn't in your bid. You've had, actually caused someone to go through an expense of a bid without that being a requirement.
Okay, I have serious concerns with this. On the, on what was just?
Can you speak a little bit more into the mic, Mr.?
I have serious concerns about this because this is, we could get sued, okay? And it's, and the minute that happens, we're gonna spend $8,000 immediately just to, they, and, and honestly, I don't even feel like it's fair. We may have, the, in the future, we may have somebody bid out of Nakadish Parish. And, and they win the bid by $400 and we, and it gets yanked. Now, the competitor here that's locally now has the advantage of going, I now know what they bid and I can now adjust my bid, okay? I don't believe that that's fair. I understand and I agree. I would love for us to do all of our business, as much of it as we possibly can. The, I don't, I'd hate to use this in the, which leads me to the next question. Do we need these calculators?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, I think, I knew what the answer was gonna be. So, so basically, the calculators that we don't have or we don't get, we're gonna have students that don't have what they need. My whole point on this one is, is let's work this through. It's already coming up on the ad hoc committee. Let's not stop this. Let's just move this one forward. And, 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 and let's deal with it when we can start working with some policies and everything else at that point in time. But let's not stop, let's not stop this particular one. So I just request that you just pull your motion so we could move forward.
Hey, if you don't mind, can you get back on the board again?
I'm still, I am? Off, I don't.
Well, what happened was, this is what happened. Your mic wasn't off, but?
Okay, am I on or what? Okay. I just wanna put in a little vibe here, okay? I, I requested that we reject all bids, okay? In the verbiage of these bids, it says that we hold the right to reject any and all bids, okay? So we're off the hook. Now, this amount, wait a minute, let me finish. This amount does not required to be put out for bids. So I'm not saying to rebid it. I am saying that they can make a local decision right here within this school system to purchase these calculators from whoever they want. And I did not say to go buy them in Menden. I said they can go out and buy these calculators from whoever they wish.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Amblin. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add on that. I see where you're going, Dr. Vincent. I get it, but I have to agree, and some of this was already answered. I have to agree with Mr. Rochelle that this is, we could end up getting sued. And I just, I see, like I said, I see where you're going. I think that maybe we should, in the ad hoc committee, maybe find a way to, we're making sure that our local vendors are putting their bids in. I mean, I just don't, I don't, do we know whether or not they have put them in, the local vendors that you? I'm not saying it's somebody specific, but are we making sure that someone local, locally is putting, are they putting them in? That's, if we don't know, I'm just saying I don't know. So that's why I'm saying it, it, it makes it seem like, and that's the perception, that it seems like we're doing this, you know, illegitimate at, targeting someone is what I'm saying. So I would, we need to find a way, yeah, we need to leave this one alone and try to find a way to get our local vendors to put their bids in. Make sure that we're getting out to them that we have something coming up, that there's something that they can, you know, put their bid in for. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, y'all, I knocked Mr. Little off by mistake. I hit two names at one time. I guess it's a fat thing, a fat thumb or fat finger mistake. Mr. Little? Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. I think this is the right idea, but it's the wrong time. This, this horse has already left the barn, so it's, it's too late to rein it back in. And I don't think we make calculators in Caddo Parish anyway, but it's just, just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Mr. Mail?
Well, I don't have reason to call for a question, but look here. The committee has not even had one session, right? Did I miss a meeting or something? And we're acting as if this committee boom exists. We haven't had a meeting yet, bro. So I would think that we need to come together, work on it, 'cause I'm looking forward to see what we're gonna do to make this happen within this parish and including people that live in the city and close by and neighboring places. But since we haven't met, wouldn't you think we shouldn't be using freely that the committee is doing something? I mean, help me, 'cause you know, sometimes I don't see the vision, some other people do. Okay, so? Ain't nobody helping?
Yeah, well.
I understand if the committee has not met. Okay, they haven't met yet, and we're gonna make a decision right now that we're gonna start pulling bids because they are not following what other process we wanna use. We're missing something. Either the horse behind the carriage or the horse went out of the stable. So how do, how do we do that? Okay? Done, I have to agree with you this time.
Mr. Vincent, Dr. Vincent? Well, hey, that part I can't, I can't control, Ms. I can't control that. Okay, Dr. Vincent, you're on.
Call for the question.
Okay.
That's what I was on for. Oh, second, I don't care.
Okay, so you have a call for the question in a second. Please vote.
All in favor?
Hey, whoa, 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 whoa. Hey, listen. This, this black, this black woman is competent enough to do her job, Mr.? Mr. Rochelle. Please let me do my job. All in favor? Those that are opposed, say nay. Okay. We have one nay. Please electronically vote. For call for the question.
In the spirit of Mr. Ryle, he just had a birthday too, let's call him.
That was just call for the question on your, that was just call for the question on yours. Yeah, so that leaves us, that leaves us to, are we back to the original motion? Or was that call for the question on our debate? Now we're on the substitute motion. Alrighty. Time to vote. Wait, wait, wait. Hold on, hold on, Ms. Feibel. So we're on the substitute, so that we're clear, we're on the substitute motion. Can you please read the motion one more time? Ms. Feibel, can you read the motion?
Purchase local wasn't in your first motion.
Hold on, whoa, 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 whoa. Too many chiefs. Ms. Feibel, can you please read the motion?
This is what I have, President Green. Move to reject all bids for bid 076-26 calculators and resubmit for bid.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Please vote now, you already have a second. Please vote electronically. We said that. Okay, so all in favor? All in favor on the substitute motion? Okay, all opposed? All opposed, say nay. Okay. Please electronic, please electronically vote. It does, your, your, your electronic vote will show what it is. Okay, so let me clarify, so let me clarify, hold on. Let me clarify what this is. So, the substitute motion was to reject all bids. Reject all bids. Okay? If you vote, a yes vote means that you will want, you want to reject all bids. A no vote means that you don't want to reject the bids. And you go back to the original motion. Okay, yeah, if the noes win, that's right. Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Bowman. We're ready for the vote. Okay, so now we're, please show the vote. Okay, that, that failed, so now we're at the original motion. That will be Mr. Rochelle's motion. So, we're, we, we already have a motion on the floor and a second, so now it's time to vote on the original motion. A yes, a yes vote means to move it forward. A no vote means not to move it forward. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, nay. Alrighty. Please electronically vote. Okay, that, that vote passes. Okay. Now, that's just 5.01. That leads us to 6.02. Consideration to approve MOU between Cattle Parish Public Schools and Brentwood Hospital of Shreveport. Do I have a motion on the floor? Ms. Bell?
Move to approve MOU between Cattle Parish Public Schools and Brentwood Hospital of Shreveport as submitted in the electronic mail-out.
Mr. Rochelle?
Second.
It has a move, a move and a second. Do you have anything you wanna say, Ms. Bell?
Yes, I do, and I, I'm going to say this, and everybody know that mental health is one of our biggest problems, and the way they gotta set up with Brentwood is a, it gonna be a conflict.
Hold on just a second. Ms., since we have a motion, Ms., you ha, you have the floor now, if you wanna speak, Ms. Uh, Ms. Glover. No, she had 6.0, she had three, she had five things to speak on.
Everything, go on.
Go ahead, Ms. Glover. I mean, yeah. Hey, hey, we forgot your name.
John Glover, 9100 Walker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana 71118. Cattle Parish Public School shall provide medical information to allow Brentwood to determine the appropriateness of a student referral. Is there a violation of HIPAA in that statement? How is it that the public school system gets to choose who it is based on what, or whom will go and receive services at this Brentwood facility? We have right now more than 25 mental health agencies that the board has already approved. Now, this program is supposed to address intensive outpatient services three times a week. One like me would ask, what are those 25 to 30 other agencies doing? And I did hear you all characterize some behaviors such as suicidal, out of control, whatever, whatever, but aren't those some of the same and similar behaviors that those 25 to 30 agencies are already addressing? When we make broad statements that dictate or denote the character of a child based on whatever it is that you all may have come up with to support this piece of legislation, I call it, we need to know what we're doing. Because what you may consider supporting this recommendation, is it really what's there? Oftentimes, we don't read between the lines, we just accept. I, you can no more tell me what's going on in my community than I can tell you what's going on in your community if I've never been to your community. You definitely can't do it in my home if you never addressed me. So, we must be careful how we feed our children to services that are only monopolizing dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Ms. Bell?
Okay, and I complete what I'm going to say. As you know, mental health is one of the biggest problems in the United States, all over. Just, we recently, even with the mental health problem of the man that got, the policeman that got killed. We got it all over. We can have 100 and still cannot meet all the needs. The way that, if I'm not mistaken, that the superintendent have it set up, some parents do have mental child, but they probably don't want anybody to know that they're going. So, with him saying that Brentwood would be at the harbor after school confidentially, we are not asking anybody to go to Brentwood, but if that parent feel that they want to take their child confidentially to Brent, I mean, to Har, to the harbor, and that Brentwood is not going into the schools, they're not doing, then we need to bring in Brentwood at the harbor confidentially or whatever way, if I'm doing it wrong, I mean confidentially. That mean I may have a child, but I may not want everybody to know my baby's having problems. Y'all gonna have to listen to these things. This thing is happening everywhere, every class, it's happening. We can say what we want. So, with this happening, this is just another thing to help our baby, but he said Brentwood is different from all the other 26. So, and then, remember, the harbor is the one that's carrying the kids who don't go to school, the dropouts and everybody. So, what I'm saying, that we need to look at this, add another help to our babies, and Brentwood would be the one to do more things ahead than the others. I hope y'all understand what I'm saying. Look out, we got a lot, I hate that mental health is the biggest problem in the world now, but it's there, it's happening. I think about these two babies, their 15-year-old cousin, and one did it to them, he had mental health problem, and they, those kids are gone. Think about it, bothers me. It is happening, and we need to look at, then if Brentwood can bring in something different confidentially to help these parents, go with it. That's what I'm saying, and I'm excited for that. I'm finished.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Who seconded that? Mr. Rochelle, do you have anything? Oh, I, oh, I didn't know if he was sitting there or not.
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Thank you, Ms. Bell. Ms. McLean?
I would like to add a friendly amendment that says, parents or guardians must provide written consent for any behavioral health services for students referred to this program. If the makers of the motion would just accept my friendly amendment?
I'm with it.
I'm fine with the attorney, never mind it.
Is that attorney, is that okay? That's fine, okay, I'll add it to it. That's fine.
What was that amendment again, Ms. Uh, McLean?
I just gave it to Darla. Parents and guardian, parents or guardians must provide written consent for any behavioral health services for students referred to this program.
Okay. And the maker of the motion is fine?
That we found.
The second is fine, okay. 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 So, now we kinda have a new motion with a, an amendment? Okay, Ms. Bowen?
I, I think that, and I don't say much, but I think this has gotten a little out of hand, this is strictly an MOU. It's just a memo of understanding between an agency. It, it doesn't mean that our other 26 agencies that are recommended, they, they maybe don't ask for MOUs. Obviously, Brentwood does, and we're just accommodating the circumstances because the parents can take their children to whoever they want. They, um, it's confidential regardless for HIPAA and many other things, so I think that's, uh, the, the arguments and the adding and all are irrelevant because you're not gonna know in the first place. This is an MOU. It is strictly for, between Brentwood and the school board, that they can go to the harbor to see clients instead of having to bring those children into Brentwood. That is merely it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Ms. Yates?
I was just gonna clarify on Ms. Bell's comment. If a parent wants to take their kid to Brentwood, they can actually just go to Brentwood and be seen.
Okay, Mr. Rochelle?
I'm gonna use a different word. I refer business all over the country, and I have business referred to me. It's a suggestion. We're making a suggestion to the parents and/or guardians to, to get whatever help may be, whatever, whatever it happens to be, and they can either decide, they, they can go yes, no, they can do whatever they want to. It is a suggestion. I do like it being clarified just a little bit. I don't think that it hurts anything just to say, you know, the, the, I, I don't, I agree it is a MOU, but the, I, I don't think that it hurts anything, but we're just giving people a suggestion, and trying to help them, and they can either receive it or not.
Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. I will be quick. I would suggest to all of the board members to look at policy JGCFA. That is the behavioral services for, behavioral health services for students policy. It is really written in a convoluted way. It's very hard to understand exactly how consent is given. I, I would urge all of you in your free time, when you're trying to fall asleep tonight, to go, and you can't fall asleep, you have insomnia because of this meeting, go and read this policy before bed, because I can't make too much sense of it. It, it really should, maybe we should send this to the policy committee, but that's all.
Okay, the attorney's on. Mr. Abrams?
This contract would have to go back to that, to Brentwood again, also for their counsel to approve. And more than likely, this, that policy was written like that because it came from the legislature.
Brentwood probably wants the, the contract, they probably won't mind signing it again.
We ain't gonna hold it up like that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, there's nobody else on the board. Please, um, please vote at this time. Yeah, Ms., Ms. Fible, if you don't mind?
Read the motion?
Read the mo, the motion with the substitute.
Okay, move to approve MOU between Cattle Parish Public Schools and Brentwood Hospital of Shreveport, and parent guardians must provide written consent for any behavioral health services for students referred to this program.
Okay. All right. It's time now to vote. All in favor? Aye. Those that oppose, nay. Okay, one abstention. Okay. Alrighty, and you have one abstention, so, um, when Ms. Fible has the chance, please electronically vote. Y'all passed that. Okay. That motion passes with 11, one abstention. That leads us down to 6.09.
No, that didn't go back on. No, it didn't.
6.09. 6.09. Do we have a motion on the floor? Ms., Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve revision to Cattle Parish School Board Policy EFAB, Employee Use of Social Media, to add number 11, employees shall not post or share content that supports, incites, or glorifies unlawful violence or threats of harm toward any individual or group which has a tendency to disrupt workplace efficiency, undermine public trust, and/or poses a reasonable risk of harm to others as recommended by the Policy Review Committee and submitted in the electronic mail-out.
Uh, Mr. Little?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Anybody that, wanna, wanna speak to this at this time? Okay, I, I'll just say this, I think we already covered the basis of that in our social media policy already. Um, I'm not sure why we're going around going back and adding this, but I believe, and I definitely don't wanna tie staff hands any more than they are already tied too much, and I'm quite sure this has stemmed from something that has happened recently, that we've seen, that's trending, that trend through social media. Um, and I do know that I, I think our staff understands that they are professionals, and there are certain things that are allowed and not allowed. But they also have, after school hours, they also have rights to say what they, they wanna say without, you know, making threats. I think they already know that, and I, I think our HR, our HR department does well in handling situations of that matter. Uh, Mr. Mayo?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm just wanting to see if I understand, who's enforcing this? Where does this fall, whose lap does this fall in? Your work, okay?
Eventually mine, yes.
All right, so you'll be making the decisions, once you, someone informed you, or you see this, then you will make the decision of how this is gonna work?
In working with HR, as we do with other employee conduct concerns. And, and of course, the lawyer.
Okay, well, and of course, the lawyer.
Yes.
I think I asked it before, but I'm just gonna ask it again. If we're gonna be, because I read something that you got on Facebook, and I don't agree with it, and I'm here as a board member, and I call you and tell you I don't agree with it, and I want you to do, because I feel like this is where this is going, so I'm, it might not be going now, but I, I feel this is where it's gonna go. Who, 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 who's gonna say that it's, it's incorrect? You're wrong. You can't, you, you can just take a dose and say, you can't put this on Facebook? Because I, we, we've got this policy written. Because I, we've got this policy written in. I mean, I'm just trying to see if I'm feeling it right. Because you run up in some people's face with this stuff, it's not going to work.
Mr. Burton? Oh, wait, before Mr. Burton speaks, we've got the attorney on.
That probably is from the last time, but I'll go ahead and say something anyway. In my short circuit, basically what it amounts to, this is going to be complicated, there's no doubt about that. Whatever it is that's going on, it's going to have to affect the district in some type of way that is efficiency. It's going to have to be something that you probably ought to know you should not be doing, okay? And it, you know, it would have to disrupt the workplace and undermine public trust. It'd be something that nobody in this room would do, okay? It's got to be something that's egregious, that causes such a stir in the community that it could, that these, that the person could be disciplined over. And it probably already exists in the policy, and it probably would already happen. But at least this gives fair warning that if you do this kind of stuff, that you could be disciplined because of it. And the thing is, the example would be that if you're causing a ruckus at a school that no one wants you to be teaching their child, then nine times out of 10, we need to be able to discipline that employee or do something in order to protect the parents and the students from whatever is going on and move that child, that employee, if we need to, somewhere else. And at least it lets you know that if you're causing that ruckus, then there is a potential that you could be moved or disciplined because of what you're doing. But it's not going to be an easy one. It's going to require a lot of people to be involved in trying to make that decision. It's not going to be haphazard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tremel. Mr. Omling?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick question, and we are trying to isolate this into whatever you post has to have a direct effect at the workplace, right? So, because everybody has an opinion on everything, so, and not everybody's going to agree. So, now the thing, it does say disrupt the workplace efficiency. And then it, then it goes on, so who determines if it undermines public trust? Okay, that's.
And that has a definition in the case law that basically tells you what public trust is. That means that it, now that's, you see, that's, those are all are, okay? Has a tendency to disrupt efficiency, undermine public trust, and/or pose. You see, so those are terms that has been used by the Supreme Court as to what you can do in your workplace if somebody's away from your workplace causing havoc on your workplace.
I get it. And then therefore, should the wording of disrupt workplace efficiency be at the end? So that we're talking about all of these things that could disrupt the workplace instead of workplace being in the middle of this and then adding all of that?
Well, the reason why it's like that, it's one, is because those are the ways that the Supreme Court has dealt with it, okay? And the only reason why we're going to be involved in it is because it's the workplace. The whole thing is the workplace. The whole deal is workplace.
It makes it, the way it's written to me, it looks like it goes beyond the workplace because workplace is a line item like all the others in there, instead of at the workplace at the end of it, which would tell me that if you do these things individually or several of these things individually, and it affects the workplace, then you are, you know, not in line with the policy. But if you say that's okay, then that's okay with me.
Well, it is okay, but every policy is subject to being attacked, there's no doubt about that. You just go with what you have. We had, you know, all received some information from an attorney, and he disagreed with all the entire policy by the time he got through with it, you know, and really wasn't about the last paragraph so much. So you can see everyone has an opinion about the First Amendment when you really get down to it, you know. So I'm not saying it's going to be any less than it is. All I know is that other policy was written in 2020, in 2020, and we hadn't had anyone complain about it, okay? So from that, from that point on, we've never had a problem with that policy so far.
Okay.
Is this necessary, or does it clarify our current policy, right? That's, or are we? You know, I guess that's the question. Does it enhance the policy that we have or not?
Hey, Ms., I know Ms. Stanford is probably, let me see if I can get her on.
She's on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Green. We actually handled this through employee conduct, which is GBRA. There is a specific paragraph in there that talks about job interference, and it says that employees shall be prohibited, prohibited from knowingly aiding or engaging in any activity for the purpose of causing disruption or interference with the performance of here, his or her job or job duties. And they are to conduct themselves otherwise in any way that would be detrimental to the efficient and orderly operation of the Cattle Parish School Board. So we would handle that situation through GBRA, which is employee conduct. It speaks specifically to job interference.
If you do it online, that other policy will get you.
This will catch it, yes.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I was saying. We didn't want to be redundant in putting something else out there that we already have, you know. So if this covers it, I, you know, I don't see why I would have to vote for it again if we have something in there. But who's next? Hold on a second.
Ms. McLean?
Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Madam President.
Hold on one second. Let me, Ms., um. Yeah, but I need to see this, the different screen.
Okay, it looks like technical difficulty, so I'm going to continue here.
I got it now, I got it.
Okay. If you look at this policy that I'm recommending we modify, if you just look at number seven, I mean, it also says that employees shouldn't be posting pornography or sexually suggestive information or drugs or things about drugs or drug-related references. So I don't, I mean, for whatever reason, there's a need for policies like this. I wish there wasn't, but there just is. So I don't know what the additional clarification, giving administration additional tools in their toolbox to use when these types of things come up, I don't see what it could hurt.
Mr. Little?
Thank you, Madam President. I think the First Amendment is sacrosanct. I think the Second Amendment is also sacrosanct. But there's a reason why I don't bring an M-16 to school board meetings and brandish them because that's not a reasonable or acceptable use of the Second Amendment. It's an actual abuse, and it's a threat to other people. And I think the idea behind this refinement to policy is, is that words have power, but there are reasonable restrictions to words in a professional environment. And it is, it is not professional to celebrate the death, murder, assassination, or violence of other peoples or parties or groups. That's just not an acceptable thing. And many, many employees have public social media accounts. And I think this also helps us in terms of avoiding litigation. I'll give an example. When George Floyd was killed, there were teachers that were terminated because they celebrated it. They sued because there was no policy like that. They, it was First Amendment, it was their opinion. They sued. In this case, we have a very specific policy that would give us the ability to make a very difficult decision. So I think, you know, to Ms. McLean's point, sometimes you need to spell things out. Sometimes you need refinements in policy. I don't think this is an unreasonable restriction to First Amendment because we shouldn't be celebrating violence because if you, if you want more of something, you allow it. Thank you.
Dr. Vincent is so predictable, I already know where this is going. Dr. Vincent? You're on to speak.
Call for the court.
Yeah, with nobody else on there anyway. Okay. There was no one else anyway, so we can go ahead and vote. Okay, thank you. I appreciate. All righty. So now, now we're on to vote for 6.09. Oh, I forgot. I did forget that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? Nay. I oppose. Please electronically vote.
Hey, it really doesn't matter what you say. You can, what's, what do they really count, what you put on the?
I guess so. Okay. That vote, that passes? Wait. That passes by one. What did you say? Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Abrams, that abstention means that goes with the majority. Yeah, the abstention goes with the majority.
So it technically passes?
Yeah, it passes, yeah. Okay. 6.10, consideration to approve proposed changes to Cattle Parish School Board Insurance Plan. Is there a motion on the floor? Ms. Bell?
Move to approve the proposed change to the Cattle Parish School Board Insurance Plan, self-funded plan, 7.5% premium increase. Require retirees, spouses to enroll in Medicare A, B, C if they retire or turn 6, 5, own or after 4, or 4, 3, 26, with the following exceptions. Retirees not eligible to enroll in Medicare Part B based on federal eligibility rules. Other retirees will have to pay a premium higher than the standard Medicare Part B premium due to income, related monthly adjustment amount, IRMAA subcharge. Require eligible retirees and spouses to enroll in Medicare Advantage Plan, add 100 special drug copay, increase ER copay from 200 to 250 as recommended by Insurance Finance Committee, and submit it in electronic mail-out. I don't have no second, so.
Okay, there's not a second? Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Little? Ms. Bowen?
I have three seconds, that motion.
There's a, a motion and a second. Ms. Bell, did you have something you want to say?
No, I do not.
Ms. Bowen?
Nope. He said what he needs to say.
Okay. Ms. Glover? And if you have anything, anybody wants to speak to this, please get on the board. So we can go ahead and. All righty.
Members of the board, Mr. Superintendent John Glover, 9100 Rocker Road, Apartment 217, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. I was once a recipient or participant in the Blue Advantage Plan. When I met what Blue Advantage said they would do, but reversed that they didn't do anymore, I went back to the traditional Medicare A and B. Now, what many have not said with regards to Medicare A and B, and my supplemental that I have now with Louisiana Blue is that I don't get any bills. But if I give my rights up to be forced to take Medicare, this Medicare Advantage Plan, Blue Advantage, I now am subject to the rules of Blue Advantage under Blue Cross Blue Shield. That means Blue Cross Blue Shield takes that 80% of Medicare A and B was to, you got me going crazy, was supposed to be covering me. I no longer have Medicare A and B as my primary. You're forcing me to take a Blue Advantage Plan for my primary, which means that 20% is not there, that was covered by Louisiana Blue. It could cost me to have a bill at the end of the equation. Currently, I have no bills with my traditional Medicare A and B and my supplemental that's Louisiana Blue. So I don't understand why it is that me, that long sheet, because there were 100 of us. 91 were okay, but I'm not okay. But then I guess it doesn't matter because I'm just that one. But I'm pretty sure there's not just me who feels this way about this being forced to take on a plan that I have already experienced that didn't work for me. And though there are many that say it works for them, it does not work for me. I earned the right to have Medicare A and B. I earned that. No one gave it to me. I also pay for my supplemental. No one gives that to me either. But you now are anticipating, probably will even approve this 7.5% increase, and then force me to lose what I know protects me, which is my traditional Medicare A and B and my supplemental. Now, I just want to say this. I'm going to do some more investigation because I don't think you should have the right to force me to take on a bill that I shouldn't have to take on. Because you need to save dollars. I would love to know in that reserve, that insurance reserve fund, what it began with and where is it standing today? And what took place so much so that brought us to this pinnacle where now you have to force me, a retiree, to take on additional expense? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Ms. Bell?
Okay, I'd like to say this. And we, we have had meetings, meetings, meetings. We have been misinformed. We have been contacted. Nobody forced nobody to get on that insurance. Nobody forced nobody to be hired as a, to be on the insurance. What we're doing is taking care of the ones that do, can fit the Blue Advantage, the ones who can't. So it's, it's maybe 50 here, maybe 50 there, 50 in my position. But nobody forced, and I want that to be said, to nobody, forced nobody to get on any of those insurances. And right now, insurance is going up everywhere, everywhere. I'm just so glad we, some companies don't even offer insurance. Some people being hired with no insurance. I think it's, we've been on it every time we talk about insurance, all these 20, 19 years I've been, it's always going to be a problem with insurance. So all I'm saying that no, I want to make sure that not, that nobody forced nobody in this system to get on insurance. It's up to you to decide if you want to be insured. And I do think that everybody knows that this world, right now, money is the thing, and everything is going up. I was teasing Ms. Tremel about a hamburger cost, I used to buy it for $5, cost $11. Everything going up. So I just want to, nobody forced nobody, and we've had the meeting, we had it at the, they come to the retired teachers meeting, they come everywhere, and nobody said, "You better get on this insurance." So get it corrected. I'm finished.
Ms. Yates?
I just want to clarify something. On the Medicare Advantage Plan, if somebody does not qualify for... On the Medicare Advantage Plan, if somebody does not qualify for A, will they not be able to be a part, have that? What will happen?
If you don't qualify for Medicare Advantage, then you will stay on our page.
Thank you.
Okay.
Blue Cross plan.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Dr. Vincent?
I'm going to crown you on that. I'm going to get you a hat, say, "Call for the question."
Okay, any, anybody second? You got... Oh, he removed his sec, he removed his, uh, "Call for the question." Oh, okay. I got you. So, okay, I got you. So, nobody else was on. But I do want to say, uh... No. All righty. All right, so we're ready to vote. Ready to vote on the motion, which is for, uh, 6.09. 6.10. All in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? Okay. Please show the, go ahead and electronically vote, please. Okay, the motion carries. So, what? Okay, now we're down to superintendent's announcements.
Members of the board, just very quickly, I wanted to let you know that I pulled one of the agenda items that was for our school calendars for the next two years. There was a change in Bossier's holiday schedule and it was going to cause us to not have an alignment around fall break next year and then the following year, not spring break. So, I'd like to go back to staff with that and I'll bring you a recommendation in December for us to have school calendar updates. Also, please, the Stuff the Bus campaign, as our group said, has started. Please know that on December the 9th, we will have Stuff the Bus at the old Parent Resource Center off of West 70th Street. So, that's a great opportunity for you to come and see all of the toys that our community is, is providing. And please notice the invitation that was in front of you for the board luncheon for December. And that's, that's it, Madam President.
Okay. Dr. Vincent?
Yes, I just want to announce to, to everyone and the public that the Ad hoc Committee meeting will be, um, December 10th at 10:00 a.m. in the morning in Conference Room 1. I also want to say that Superintendent Burton has been very supportive of this effort, which is, is the, the aim is to increase local and small business participation. And again, we want to keep Cattle great.
No, I, what? Yeah, I have one. Um, couple of things, hold on. Um, we just voted to increase this insurance. And I believe the employees are absolutely right about their raise and trying to find them some more money. We're going to have to do something when it comes down to making sure that our employees are taken care of. You know, staff keeps asking us to give, um, raise insurance and insurance and we'll take this, cut here, cut there, but we're going to have to give at some point. You know, I don't know if it's a raise or supplement or something, but we're going to have to do something. So, I'm probably going to get a bunch of calls, a few calls on this insurance. But I think every, like, you know, like we say, everything is going up. But at some point, we're going to have to do something as far as a raise for employees. Also, if I don't see you before next meeting, have a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey. All righty, Ms. Yates?
Motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, you got... Uh, Ms. Bell?
Okay.
Now, now, look, you just had 20 minutes up there at first.
Well, this is a board meeting and I can say...
Hey, yeah, okay, go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to say, um, I'm looking, um, I just want to say that a happy Thanksgiving and I want Mary Tremel to know that Gremlin will not win the game this year by your classics. I just want Mr. Mel to know that.
Okay. Mr. Bowman?
You took my thunder, so, that was it. I did have it wrote down to, to speak on that, but we can discuss that another time. I'll go, I thought that was a motion you was making. I'll go second your motion.
Yeah, Ms. Do, Dr. Do, hey, hey, hey. Dr. Dozart?
I just want to say thank you for that announcement about Gremlin Southern. There's a NFL, uh, NFL game that will be held Saturday, I mean, Thanksgiving Day. And I'm pulling for both teams.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Tremel?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, I think I'll second that.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Those that oppose? Please vote. 909, y'all got me today.